Welcome to State Board of Education meeting. We'll start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to go a little bit in a new order partly because it's a important day. We've had a fair amount of changes in our system. So I want to start with a report from our new acting deputy superintendent, Colt Gill. I had sent a correspondence out when Colt's appointment was announced, and I just want to reiterate in welcoming him on behalf of the board our sincere appreciation and enthusiasm for Colt taking on this important role in a time of great urgency in the state of Oregon. Colt and I have worked together for many years. He is an extraordinary leader in education in the state and across the country. I have seen him work in trenches in very intimate ways to support students. He cares in a very deep and intimate way about outcomes for Oregon students and has worked shoulder to shoulder with community partners, with educational leaders, with policymakers, to make things better for students throughout his career. We are lucky to have him in Oregon. We've been lucky to have him in the role that he's played in the chief education office for the last year or so, and are thrilled that he has agreed to step into this role as acting deputy superintendent for ODE. So I couldn't think of a person who would give me more constant reassurance and confidence going in to the challenges we have this year and moving forward than Colt. So I offer him my sincere gratitude and appreciation for taking this on. In my comments, I also commented really strongly about the tenure of Salam Noor and our appreciation for his incredible leadership in the state of Oregon over the last two and a half years. He too has lived in the trenches. He has worked really closely with this board. He has allowed us to be courageous in our work in leading the state, and he has a legacy that will live on here in our work. So we'll continue to follow his work and contributions in Oregon and elsewhere, and I want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to his service also to this board, to ODE, and to the state. So let me turn it over to Colt with that welcome, and let him give a report and share his thinking.
Thank you, Charles. I have just a few things to share, and I will try to keep this short. I know the agenda is packed today. I also want to start by recognizing Salam Noor. He's been a mentor to me in many ways, and we've worked together as colleagues over the years, many, many years, actually. I've always appreciated both his drive to improve our education at a systems level and specifically his drive to improve outcomes for students specifically. His work is evident throughout Oregon in our statewide programs related to our federal programs, from No Child Left Behind to the Really Welcome Shift to ESSA, our diploma requirements, our assessment systems, literacy efforts, and much, much more. And I want to also let you know that Salam is still diligently providing service to the department through this transition and has been a great support in this effort. I also have a lot of respect for this board. So I have known Charles for many years. I've known George for many years, and Jerry for many years, and others I've gotten to know recently, and I've watched you in action, mostly on video, and have seen a real commitment to equity that this board specifically has and is demonstrated through both discussion and action. I'll mention, too, that I previously served as an advisor to this board in the same role as Don Grodding, so I have some past experience several years ago over a number of years. And I'm just going to say that during this quick transition, I've been focusing my time on combining two calendars of Dr. Noor's and my own that were already very packed and trying really hard to provide continuous support to our leaders at ODE and also reaching out to our partners and continuing to work and move our work forward. I do want to take just a minute to share some of the priorities that I come to the board with. Through these, I think you'll see a consistent process and approach that's centered on equity and collaboration throughout each of these priorities. The first, though, is maintaining current services and support to students in districts here at the department. They provide a number of services, from nutrition services to providing state school funding to transportation support and everything in between. We are also incredibly focused on three new critical efforts. So we do have Oregon's plan for ESSA that includes assessment systems, educator effectiveness, accountability systems, and support for a more well-rounded education. We are now in the implementation phase and reconnecting with all the communities and partners that Salam and the ODE team have connected with over the previous year in the design of the plan. Now it's implementation time, and we're continuing that partnership and collaboration through the implementation. The high school success effort, that's our Measure 98 work. So Measure 98 rolled out this school year, and funds were delivered to districts on time. Districts are spending those funds on Measure 98 projects. In this coming year, we'll be rolling out a different eligibility, needs assessment, and application process that's required under the law for year two. So year one was designed to get the dollars in the hands of districts and start serving students rather quickly. Year two begins to refine the process and ensure that all those projects are focused on the students that our systems are not currently serving well. So we'll begin to see that roll out in the coming month, and then on through the winter and spring. The third piece of new work is the implementation of the statewide Chronic Absenteeism Plan. So this was a plan developed by the Oregon Department of Ed and the chief education office last December, and the legislature and governor funded it in the last session with about $7.5 million. The staff is being hired for that. We're determining which districts will receive intense support and then some regionalized programs to serve districts across the state of Oregon. So again, those are three major new efforts that we'll be working hard to implement. A second piece that I'm working on is filling some key vacancies so that we can build capacity here at ODE. So we do have a chief of staff position that we're in an active search for, and our assistant superintendent of the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment, both critical roles to see through each of the previous three items that I put forward to you. The final area of priorities has to do with Governor Brown as the superintendent of public instruction putting forward some priorities that are directives for me, and I did share her memo with you, so it's at your table there. And all this highlight, she categorized these as four areas, but I'll highlight a few of those. So one of the directives here is working to embed equity and culturally responsive practices across all of the ODE programs and initiatives. So we'll be infusing that work throughout the system in places it already exists and in places where it hasn't come up. We'll be working to infuse that. Also, a focus on improving outcomes for traditionally underserved students through our statewide equity initiatives. So this includes the African-American Black Student Success Grants, the American Indian Alaska Native Plan, the English Language Learner Plan, and new efforts to improve high school success. So that would include Measure 98, the Chronic Absenteeism work, and the work that I did over the last year as the Education Innovation Officer, where we are trying to identify and scale up promising and effective practices that foster really state, local, and regional partnerships to improve graduation outcomes for our students. We're also focusing quite a bit on collaboration between agencies and divisions. So we are tasked to collaborate closely with the Early Learning System Director and the Early Learning Division to develop a new statewide early learning plan, one that's inclusive of a very strong pre-kindergarten to third-grade transition system. And then we'll be working closely with our partners at the Youth Development Division to integrate dropout prevention strategies and reengage youth through partnership with them and actually with the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission as well. I also have a couple of areas where we'll partner closely with the chief education office. One of those is to assist with efforts to fulfill culturally responsive educator professional development goals through direct collaboration with the Council on Educator Advancement as it's formed over these next couple of years. The second one with the chief education office is partnering with our STEM hubs across the state, our regional achievement collaboratives, ESDs, school districts, and partner agencies and communities to better align regional workforce needs with career-connected learning in our schools, our community colleges, and universities. So those are the priority areas I come up with. I label those as three. So we have our current efforts. We have the work on filling some serious vacancies in our system, and then we have this work with the governor's priorities. So with the limited time, I'll be happy to take questions, but I'll also refer to Chair Martinez to see if there is time for questions or if you need to move on through the agenda.
Yeah, I think we have a few minutes, so for sure. Let's hear from other board members, specific questions or comments about, I guess we'll call this the immediate agenda things that Colt just described. There's urgent work already underway that is being facilitated. So if you have comments, questions, anything else you want to say, and welcome of Colt. Let's take a couple of minutes to do that. Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I mentioned yesterday to Colt, I'm particularly interested in the connections with the Talent Council and the Talent Plan relative to workforce needs. My kind of primitive description of it was that whereas sometimes I feel like there's a kind of a push element to this, the Talent Council and Talent Plan, at least from the perspective of the legislature, was meant to be more of a pull sort of strategy, trying to assess what employers viewed as their needs. So it feels like that could be an important element in developing at least number four.
Absolutely. I agree. Yeah, thank you.
Other comments?
Just so that it's said out loud, and I think I said it to Colt, but I also recommended in thinking about the collaboration between agencies and divisions that we include the Oregon Arts Commission and the Oregon Cultural Trust as partners, and that as we're thinking about the whole child and educating the whole child, they have, they're an excellent resource in terms of arts learning.
Thank you, and thanks for the email on that, too.
Okay. Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad that you're there, and this board is excited to be working with you on these initiatives. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to board member reports. So would someone like to jump in and start? We don't have to go in order, though you usually prefer to go in order. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just start. First, I'd, too, would like to extend my appreciation to Salam Noor, Dr. Noor, for the time and efforts that he has put into improving educational opportunities for all kids throughout the state. I think that he had an unparalleled commitment to equity and ensuring that all children have the opportunities to excel, and I think that came through in all the work that he's done. I, like a lot of people around this table, have known Dr. Noor for a number of years and have continued to be pleased with the work that he's done on behalf of Oregon's children. And particularly, I thought the work that he and the department did around ESSA and especially working with many advocacy groups who had a lot to offer to the ESSA plan and to ensuring equity and that we serve our most vulnerable children, that he was open to, and ensuring that the department was open to hearing the various voices that had much to bring to that conversation. So I appreciate that, and regardless of what his next step is, wish him all the best. Also, want to welcome Colt, who I've known, and a number of people at this table have known for many years, and I, for one, have been a fan of his for many years, and can't think of a better person to step in at this time and help lead. Couple of other things. One is that Colt mentioned the Measure 98 Student Success Plan, and I did have the opportunity to participate with some stakeholders in a conversation about the upcoming, I don't know whether we call them standards or requirements, that will be going into effect here fairly soon, and that the department and Colt's office are working on right now in order to have something that school districts and stakeholders can help lead that direction over the next year or two. And I think it's an important piece, and I think will, if done correctly, and help lead to greater high school success and higher graduation rates for all kids, but especially for those who've struggled the most in terms of being successful in high school. So the other thing I will save for when we have conversation about the board's conversation around working agreements and so forth, I do have some questions, quite frankly, about as things have transpired over the last month or so, where the role of the board fits in and what boards should know, does know, ought to know, what kind of input and so forth as a board, particularly key decisions that affect our work, how we can or should or be able to at least have some input response or something. So I'll just leave that where it is for now.
Thank you, George.
So recently, saw a presentation which was really thought-provoking for me on the future of learning as it pertains to sort of the changing workforce needs that will be happening in the 21st century, the future of work, you know, becoming more automated, entry-level jobs requiring higher levels of skills before you actually can take that job, but also looking at the fact that students can now learn at any time and anywhere, right? They can go on YouTube and find, and take a whole course on quantum physics outside of the classroom, outside of regular school time. And so it made me think about sort of the changing role of the educator as no longer just content delivery, and what that means in terms of what is our role in sort of providing space through policy and through rulemaking and transforming the system in that way on behalf of the students. And the other thing that came out of that conversation was that the skills that they're really, really going to need in this sort of newly automated futuristic world are the human attributes. And so in what way are we helping them, and again, when I say we, I guess, as a system, how are we helping students discover who they are so that as they are leaving our the education system and going out into the workforce and going out into the world, they have a sense that there is an opportunity that maybe is not linear, and that they have a true sense of themselves, their core competencies, what they know, but what they know about themselves as well, and their passions, so that they can sort of navigate that system? It just, it feels like it's a really interesting time in the world of learning and transforming education. So I wanted to put that out there. I know that, you know, that Dave has this, Dave Conley has this slide deck on the future of learning. I don't know if it's something that we would have time to hear a presentation on as a board that might inform, again, some of the policy decisions that we are making that can help shape the space on behalf of what's happening in the building and in the school districts. So that's what's been on my mind lately.
Dave's an emeritus faculty member in my department, so he would not be hard to get in, get in to visit with us. Thank you for sharing that. I'd like to go next. Vlad, you want to, you want to jump in there?
I'm not quite sure.
Just a chance to check in, what's going on? Anything related to the board or just what's going on at school right now? Give us a temperature of what students are dealing with this fall at your school.
Well, right now, we're, right now, it's like PSATs for high school students, so, and for us, too, is SATs and stuff like that, and for seniors for our class, we're really busy right now because we have a bunch of scholarships and colleges we have to apply to, and we also senior projects and cash projects for ID, so a lot on our plate right now. Nothing pertaining to the board. I don't have anything pertaining to the board right now.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and introduce myself. I'm Erica Keefe-Fover. I'm the new teacher advisor, and I'm from Hermiston, born and raised, and, sorry, I'll talk in the microphone. And I've been a teacher there for 15 years as an English teacher, and then the last three years as an instructional coach. So a lot of things that weigh on my mind have to do with the retention of teachers, helping new teachers be successful so that we don't have teachers leaving the profession. That's been an issue for us, and of course, attracting teachers to Oregon is always something that I'm interested in. But particularly, this year I had the opportunity to get back into the classroom for one period a day. I'm teaching a course called The Oregon Teacher Pathway. You may or may not have heard of it, but it feeds into a lot of your discussion on the culturally and linguistically responsive students. Came originally from a grant from the Center for the Culturally and Linguistically Responsive Teachers, and that grant is kind of ending, but the program is still in place and it's been really successful. So yesterday, I spent the day at Eastern Oregon University in La Grande with a group of 85 teachers from our rural community who are interested in being teachers and specifically interested in being teachers in Oregon, and they have mentors at the college who are there to support them, and they're learning all about the things that you're discussing. How can we make sure that all students have access to the same education? How can we make sure that we are sensitive to the cultural issues of our students? And so even as high school juniors and seniors, they're learning those things and they're excited about them. So that's kind of been what's been on my mind as connected to your agenda.
Great. Well, thank you, Erica. It's, we're thrilled that you're here. You didn't get to hear us probably last month laud your, your application and your coming. So we're really appreciative of that work.
Great.
For those that don't know, the board with Jessica's support, when we looked at the teacher, we've had amazing advisors in our work, students, teachers, and our superintendent advisors, and so we become very protective of those voices and making sure that we bring to the board a lot of diverse perspectives and those voices. And it's helped us this time to be asked for multiple nominations from our partners. And so this was our first year of really having multiple nominations, and of course, it's excruciating when you get multiple nominations because you want to find places for all those folks. But we were really thrilled with your nomination and the voice that you're bringing as an educator on the ground, and also a voice other than sort of the typical voices that we get in that kind of a Lamont Valley bubble, so, but it means a more sacrifice on your part to be here.
Yeah.
So we're thrilled that you're here. You'll get this vibe very quickly from this board, but we really enjoy listening and hearing from experts out there. So, you know, I will just say upfront, we won't let you be shy, but don't be shy. We really, we really appreciate your perspective, and what you're bringing is very unique. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm honored.
Okay. Okay, who's next?
Gary, next. For the second meeting in a row, I need to apologize to the group for my informal dress, but I'm wearing one of the only pair of pants that I can put on with one hand. So I'm, I think by next meeting, I'm going to be okay, so I apologize for that.
I was hoping you were setting a new trend.
We were teasing before the board meeting that we kind of liked the no tie trend, so it's particularly good for Charles, so I'm happy for us to just start doing that.
I'd like to thank Tobias Reed for taking time out of his very busy schedule to sit here at the table with us. It's really appreciated, and I can say from working in the district that he lives in now with his family, that he's a great, great public education advocate, and we appreciate your presence whenever you can come.
Thanks.
I also want to thank Colt for taking time out with both Miranda and myself on Tuesday to have a really nice conference call, an opportunity to say hello, bring up some thoughts and ideas that I think were well-received, and we appreciate that personalized approach that I know you're known for and will continue to do. I had a chance this last, this current month to go to an OSBA regional meeting in central Oregon and also a COSA regional meeting in central Oregon, and I was impressed at the number of issues that came up that are the very issues that we are working on. There's not a feeling of a disconnection in terms of our time and energy that we're working on and what administrators around the state and school board members around the state are concerned with, and it was a good feeling, and I like that alignment. Let's see, oh, yes. With Colt being with our group now, I think we've had a really good succession of individuals who have furthered our work. Rob Saxton, I thought, did a tremendous job in helping to restructure the way the department was working. I think Salam did a tremendous amount of goodwill out in the field, a great listener and a very sensitive and concerned individual, and Colt comes forward with a lot of those same skills and some of his own. So I think this succession forward can be made into a positive, and I look forward to our opportunity to work with you, Colt. I also have to apologize a second time. Unfortunately, I have to leave about 4:15 today, and so I'll miss, I think, our last part of our last agenda item, which I know is an important one. And then finally, I remember when Jessica, where is she? First, there.
I'm right here.
First got in her position, and she gave the board members a call and asked them if they wanted to personally meet for dinner with her as she started out, and I thought that was such a nice approach. And since that time, I believe the service that we have all received has really been top-notch. I can't remember a time when she wasn't timely with any requests that I made or that the board made. I have said in many of our meetings, the user-friendliness of our agendas has really come a long way. You will greatly be missed. It's kind of sad in a way that this continual back and forth that at least I utilize a lot with you will now be a bit different, but I congratulate you on your work and look forward to supporting you any way we can as you move forward. That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jerry. Miranda, you want to jump in?
Sure. So over the last sort of month and a half, I've had sort of a unique opportunity. Some students reached out to me in my capacity as a board member, and we've had this awesome back and forth about the wage gap, and this is discussion these students are having for fun. This isn't like a class or something. They just thought, hey, what can we do about this? And they're Portland public school students, and I was just so struck by how engaged And I was just so struck by how engaged students are. I think it's always a good reminder. Um, I think when I was their age, I was considering what flannel to tie around my waist would look best. So, when I see these students talking about this stuff, it's just so, so amazing. Um, any opportunity that we all have to reach out to students, man, it just reminds you why we're doing what we're doing. It's really special. So, I appreciate that they reached out to me. I mean, I didn't even have to do the work. So, um, I'm hoping that I can go visit them soon and we can actually talk in person. Um, I think one of their classes is going to make some space for that. So, kind of a cool thing. Um, I also apologize I have to outdo, uh, Jerry and I have to leave midday today. So, um, I, I am pretending I have things to do, but really it's because I don't wanna be around for the goodbye for Jessica, cause I'll cry and it'll be embarrassing. Um, but I just kinda wanna put a plug in too for how extraordinary her work has been. I feel very lucky to have gotten to know her. And, uh, I don't know. I think that, so she'll be up here sometimes for us and we will be able to pepper her with aggressive questions, which will be super fun for all of us. So, at least we'll still see her. Thank you so much for everything.
So, first of all, I wanna, uh, welcome Erica. Um, Hermiston reminds me a lot of Woodburn. I really love that town and I go through there quite often on my way to, going to Tri-Cities and whatnot. So, welcome and, you know, it's a little trek, um, like Modesta and others have to make every month. And unfortunately, I just come, you know, 15 minutes. I can literally leave, you know, last minute, but I know it's a lot different when you, so thank you for your commitment. Thank you. My dad's a retired teacher, so, um, got a special place in my heart for teachers. Um, I also wanna thank Jessica. Um, and I too, I don't know what it is, a trend, but the no ties and we all have to leave early. I have to leave afternoon. I'm a small business owner and sometimes work just has to, you know, has to take priority. Um, but thank you, Jessica. Thank you for everything that you've done. I think you've made, you've definitely made me a better board member, um, and, you know, helped me. And, um, Jessica's, uh, outstanding. I mean, you can say many things. I, as I felt more trust and comfortable, you know, I'd start communicating with her after hours and asking for stuff. And guess what? She'd be, you know, she'd, actually, I was expecting it, you know, next day or two and right away she'd respond. And so, so sorry, but thank you for that as well. So, especially with your children, you know, children and stuff like that. So, uh, but yeah, um, thank you very much. She's outstanding and, um, the opportunity you have is well deserved. And I'm not, I won't say goodbye. It's just, you know, till the next meeting, I'm sure we'll see ya. Um, again, welcome, Colt. Um, it was really good to chat with you, uh, the other day. Um, appreciated that opportunity to do that. And I also would just extend, um, my appreciation for Salam. What, what I remember, uh, one, many things, but is when we were, they were holding the ESSA meetings. And I know that, you know, there was, it was like a road trip, right? I look, you know, Oregon's a big state, right? So, I, you went to all corners of the state, but I was here, uh, locally. And, um, and I think that says a lot when the leader of the, of the ODE, the organization is present. People appreciate that. So, and I know that takes a lot of, again, time and effort to, and, and away from, you know, and that, somebody in that position to be away and he has a family too. It's a sacrifice and he's sacrificing for all of us and all of our families and all of our children, just like we all do here. So, I wanna honor that and, and say that. My last thing is, um, I had a chance to, uh, be part of a meeting in Woodburn at Pacific University. Congresswoman, uh, um, Bonamici, if I hopefully I said that right, was in attendance. She's actually, um, so Pacific University is in, uh, Forest Grove and that's her congressional district, but we have a satellite campus. So, she was there and one of the things that really stood out with me is that just her support for K-12 education, especially something that's, uh, near and dear to my heart, our DACA students, um, in this, uh, program cohort program. We have students that go from Woodburn High School to Chamacada, which is in the Woodburn Campus and literally across the street to Pacific University, all to become teachers. So, it was really neat to kinda see the high school students, the current college students. And then we have, um, there's a, one of the schools is Washington Elementary. So, we started at Pacific, then we went to Washington Elementary and I got to see those students. There were some DACA, some not, but now they're in the, um, stage where they're, you know, uh, become their student teachers basically. And, and then there was one that actually had gone through the program and she was a teacher. So, it was really cool to see that progress. And they were just Latino, Latina students. And so, but it was really interesting to hear just that journey, see the journey in front of you, but then the challenges, especially with the DACA students. And they, they have, you know, a tremendous amount of challenges. We have those students in K-12, which again, their families are part of that. So, um, but I just wanted to thank her for coming to, to Woodburn. And, and again, I know she's an advocate for K-12 education and her role as a congressman. So, thank you. That's it.
Great. Modesta?
So, um, I guess I would just like to say that, um, it was a real pleasure working with, uh, Salam. He was very, um, open to conversations and he represented ODE very well. But also, we know Colt. So, it'll be, um, I think a smooth transition. And, uh, I think, uh, with Jessica, it was just a, a very nice, um, I guess, opportunity or, you know, when I first started last year, uh, she was the first person I had contact with and it was just, uh, an easy transition for me. She made everything much, much easier, um, to be a part of the, uh, State Board of Education. So, uh, and she saved me a couple times. Thanks. But I think, uh, for, um, my tribe and most of the other tribes in the state of Oregon, we're kind of, um, in this process of, uh, beginning to, uh, work with, um, the state of Oregon with the travel consultation policy, um, that came out. And, and now it's up to the tribes, the different, the nine tribes to kinda figure out how we all work that through our system. And, um, uh, I think we have just as much red tape as the state of Oregon. So, it's gonna be a bit of a process, but we're all working towards, you know, um, on, we're, we're all working on issues with the American Indian-Alaskan natives, um, in the state of Oregon. And I think that's pretty much where we're at right now. So, going through the process.
Great. Thank you. Treasure Reed, welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry I'm not able to come as, as often as I would like. I wanna make sure you, uh, you all know, um, Kim Olson from our office, who's, who's sitting in the front row. She will be here when I can't be. And I guess the, uh, the main thing to, uh, to share is, is our, um, the early stages of some exploration we're making around, uh, financial literacy and what role we might be able to play in our office and in conjunction with the, the board's work. Still kind of, uh, surveying what, what's happening in, in various districts, what other states are doing and, and how we might be able to involve some of our, um, colleagues in the, in the financial services industry. And hope to be back to you with, with some more specific updates and perhaps some proposals. Uh, we're not, we are, we are ready to, to be helpful as, as we can and, uh, I'll be here as often as I can.
Well, thank you. Uh, Jerry said it earlier, but we really appreciate your, uh, contributions. They've been really helpful, giving us perspective and we know how difficult your schedule is. And it was great to, to get the chance to meet Kim at our last, um, board meeting. And of course, we're, we're glad that she'll be here when you can't be. Thank you.
We thought you needed some more Kims.
Right. We need more Kims, exactly. No, but we really do appreciate, uh, the effort. It, it, it really does pay off in our sense of the broader, um, perspectives around the state. So, thank you for that. Um, a few, uh, comments for me. Um, one is, um, I had the, um, honor of attending the Night of a Thousand Stars, um, event, uh, for the Springfield School District, um, Foundation last weekend. A thousand stars are those students in that district. It was a amazing event celebrating, um, the achievements of students and the opportunities in that district to continue really important work that's been laid. And I just wanna appreciate Superintendent Sue Ricky Smith for her leadership in the district and the amazing staff and, um, teachers, um, who do work every day in that district. It was very inspiring. I don't know what the final tally was, but, um, they made some bucks. And, um, the outpouring in that community to support what goes on in that district was really inspiring. So, I wanted to call that out. I also wanted to appreciate, um, I've met with a number of, um, superintendents, including just yesterday, um, Gustavo Balderas and Eugene. Uh, and I'm just constantly overwhelmed with the amount of work going on at the local level, at district levels in terms of advancing in a very bold way, um, work to improve outcomes for students. There's innovation going on that sometimes does not trickle up to us. And getting a chance to talk with superintendents about what they're doing on the ground really has been, um, very useful for me and of course inspirational for me. I will just echo, um, among the themes I hear from these kinds of conversations is, uh, strong desire to better understand how the board and ODE and the governance structure at the state is working or will work going forward. I think that's a, that's a constant question and a constant worry and concern that's out there. I'm sure that's, uh, Colt's intimately familiar with that narrative as well. Um, I also get a lot of appreciation for the work of this board. And what I've heard over and over again is that the, the recent work of this board over the last few years has really provided a kind of focus, um, a kind of cover to do really important work around equity in districts where sometimes that can be complicated given other priorities. And a great deal of appreciation for the role that the board is playing in both, um, lighting the fire, uh, to improve outcomes for students, but also, um, you know, getting out of the way of the innovations that are occurring at, at the local level. Um, and balancing those two things, I think, has been, um, we, we, what I, at least what I'm hearing is we've done a pretty good job on our work in the last few years of, of finding that groove. So, it is something that Colt and I have also talked about and I'm anxious to continue to, um, have those discussions about the board's, um, role, um, in the, in those broader governance, uh, questions. I will say, uh, on a more personal level, uh, on, as a parent, it's been, I was telling George on the drive up here how interesting it's been for me. My son just turned 18 last weekend, so I'm dealing with that. I tell him, you know, he's an adult in the eyes of the law, but he's still a kid, um, to us and that will continue to be true. But he's, uh, navigating the machinery for a kid who's in IB and IHS and trying to figure out college. It's just such a complicated machinery to navigate and we know that as policymakers in our roles. But it's very different when you're a parent trying to move through the system. And I, I've been so, um, confronted with the subtle, um, but powerful challenges that occur for students who have every possible privilege, which is certainly my kid, in navigating this kind of machinery. And I've had to ask myself repeatedly, what would this be like for families and communities that don't have the access, the knowledge, the advocacy skills and, and resources that we have in helping our son navigate, um, the machinery? So, I think that has created a new kind of, um, lived experience urgency for me. Those of you that have been through this, I know Anthony has recently because of, um, Christians', um, participation in university. But it does, it does reinforce how much work there is, how many gaps there are on the ground. And in having the intimate exposure is a little different than the kind of exposure we get as policymakers. So, it has caused me to think, um, to be reminded about how important that work is that we're doing. Let's see, I wanted to, um, also make a couple of comments about the, uh, the transition that we're having around, um, Jessica's position. Jessica's gonna report to us in a, in a few minutes. And, uh, we're not really saying goodbye to her. I know we're all kind of grieving a little bit, but we're not really saying goodbye to her. Um, but I wanna echo some of the things that your board colleagues have said. We have had, in my years on the board, we have had the luxury of, um, really strong board support. Emily, who's, who's back there, um, left some big shoes to fill in her, in her work, um, as board administrator. Jessica's come in and, in, over these last more than two years and really, um, uh, set up the board for success in so many immeasurable ways. So, I've got more intimate exposure of that because I get to interact with her through text messages and phone calls on, I don't know if it's every day, but it's probably close to every day. And, uh, she plays the role of advocating for the voice of this board in the context of the work that we do with the agency, but also more broadly in an incredibly effective way. Um, she's been essential at sort of being anticipatory about the challenges ahead, bringing them to board leadership. It's allowed us to move forward with a lot of clarity, um, in ways that it might be hard for the board to really appreciate, but I have seen it on an everyday basis. It is a big loss to this board. Um, her commitment to helping the board, um, realize its commitments to equity and inclusion as it relates to even our advisor selection process. It permeates, uh, through her everyday, um, actions. And I will, I will miss our daily text messages and, um, the work that she does. Um, I'm confident that we will be well-staffed going forward as we, um, as we take those next, next steps. And of course, we're gonna look forward to continue to work with Jessica in her new role in the agency. But, um, it is a loss and we are gonna, we're gonna miss you profoundly. And you've made a, a very big influence on this board. So, we'll get to hear from her in just a minute, but I really wanted to echo that sentiment, um, from the board and that we, we cheer you, um, today for that work. The last thing I wanted to comment on, George mentioned earlier that we'll be doing a little bit of work, um, later today on our, um, primarily on our operating or working agreements part of our retreat work. Um, I really do see these, the, there are kind of three things that are, are around this topic and they do bump into each other. So, one has to do with the working agreements themselves, which is really about how the board communicates our commitments in primarily informal commitments to each other, about our communications during meetings, outside meetings, to maintain the board relationship health and the quality of our functioning at board meetings. Um, that obviously also connects to the broader work that Jessica's helped lead us around policies and roles and responsibilities. That relates more specifically to sort of statutory authority and what board members can and should do. That's a really important, uh, set of work and there's a fair amount of gray area that we're trying to sort through. So, that work will also continue, but they're connected, but not the same thing. The, the third area is really around, um, governance, um, because this is also touched on. And, you know, with the changes in the deputy superintendent position and the board's role in those decisions and the, the questions that George was alluding to, I think are also really important in the conversations that we're having internally, but also our conversations that are being led in part by the chief education officer, office, by the, um, governor and of course by the legislature around the, the overall governance system. And I think we need to continue to pay a lot of attention to the right model going forward and use our voice in, in these three areas. But I, I do see that they're connected, but I also wanna make sure that we call them out because our work in each of these areas can be, um, sometimes confusing. Is this about our working agreements? Is this about governance? And I, I've certainly, um, had that experience. So, um, it's important that we recognize all three of those areas are sort of unfolding in real time in our work. Um, and they will continue to, um, be a big focus for our board going forward. So, I think that's the end of my report. And, um, why don't we go on and hear from Jessica?
Well, thank you. Um, so I'll start off, um, just asking you a couple, uh, a couple of things about the agenda. So, I'm asking the board to table consent agenda item 3E, which is the competitive farm to school grant, uh, to December. We were short on our notice time to the field. So, in order to provide enough time for comment, we're, we're asking the board to table this decision to December. Moving this particular item does not affect the grant program as ODE was planning on doing the award on December 17th. Uh, so it will not impact, impact that award, but, um, so I wanna make sure that I put that out there before you vote on your consent agenda.
Yep. So, after Jessica's report, when I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, that would be the time to, um, ask for the, uh, for the, for that item to be taken off the agenda for today.
That's a separate motion, correct, to remove it? Or can?
Yeah, when we raise the, the consent agenda, right.
So, then I have, uh, just sort of three updates. Um, the OSBA conference is coming up. Uh, it'll be in November. It's scheduled, uh, for the 13th through the 14th, I believe, in Portland. Director Russell and Director Colonna will be representing the board at the OSBA conference. And Director Colonna has, um, also cheerfully agreed, uh, to introduce the Teacher of the Year Award. So, he, um, he will be representing the board during that luncheon. Uh, third, nominations for student advisors should be going out in March of 2018 for the 2018-2019 school year. Last year, I would, actually in June of this year, um, we, uh, the board signaled to staff that they wanted the current student advisors to be part of that nomination, dominating committee. So, I'll be working very closely with your next, uh, administrator to make sure that that, uh, process is still being followed and that, um, you know, they continue to get, uh, a very, um, gifted applicant pool. Uh, third, uh, on April 7th through the 9th, the National School Boards Association will be in San Antonio, Texas for their annual conference. Vice Chair Valise and Director Russell, Russell will be representing the board at the NSBA Conference. Vice Chair Valise and Director Russell will be representing the board at the NSBA conference. Donna Newbeck will be sort of trying to grab you some time during the day today to have you sign some paperwork, so make sure that you do that before you head out. And I guess I just, I will just share some final thoughts with the board, and I'll end my report. Obviously, today is my official last board meeting as your executive officer. I, you know, as I reflect back on the last two years, nine months with the board, I cannot really help but think about all the positive accomplishments that we've had together. During this time, we have intentionally focused our work around equity. All the work sessions from the first year laid the foundation for the board to dive deeply into the mission, vision, and values work. And then grounded in your mission, vision, and values, the board now has the opportunity to create the strategic goals with measurable outcomes, create a communications plan, update the board's policy and procedures manual, and finalize your operating agreements. We have also operationalized the equity lens into the board docket. For me, this is pretty incredible work that you did because now ODE staff have to have, have to apply the equity lens to OAR or policy proposals in a way that hasn't been done before. We also created a brand-new system for nominating student advisors to the board. We previously did not have a process, and now we do. So I hope that you continue to be intentional about the students that you select and that they continue to be representative or against our student population. We have also focused on board development. The board allowed me to focus on relationship building among the board members from the moment I started. Jerry sort of alluded that. One of the first things I did was invite several of you to dinner, and I actually forgot about that. So thank you for bringing up that lovely memory. And in this particular process, we, we have done a lot, a lot of work to be more transparent and be more community-focused. You now have individual email accounts where I provide you support, but the public now has an ability to, to, to send you information, and you're more accessible to the community. And then, you know, I think sort of my last couple of thoughts is, and Charles sort of mentioned to this, the executive board, executive officers is the board's advocate in the agency. And so they make sure that your work moves forward. As staff, they provide you support from booking hotels, ordering lunches, to providing you policy advice, and play a very integral role in the creation of the board agenda. The executive officer also makes sure that ODE staff are always thinking about how decisions will be impacted by the board. A healthy relationship with your executive officer is, it's pretty critical to your success in making sure that your mission, vision, and values and goals get implemented by the agency. I cannot, I cannot say enough how humble I've been these last few years to be a representative in the agency and in the community. This opportunity has, is something that I'll definitely carry with me forward and has shaped me in very many positive ways. So thank you for putting your trust in me, for seeking my guidance, and most of all, for believing in me. Please know that you can continue to count on me if you need advice or just need someone to talk, talk to. Please don't hesitate to shoot me a text or shoot me an email or come to my office, whatever. Just know that I'm always available for, for anything that you need. So with that, I'm excited for my new role as legislative director for ODE. You know, the process is very competitive, and it was definitely not an easy decision to put my hat in the ring for this position. But I'm excited to pursue my passion for education policy and the legislative process, and I'm also looking forward to represent Colt, ODE, the board, the governor in a very different capacity. And again, I just want to say thank you.
What I hear is that she's going to, oh, I'm sorry. What I hear is that she's going to keep doing this job in addition to her new job.
I like that. Let's, let's all hear that. I think that's a good strategy. I think Jessica deserves a little round of applause for her. We have some other comments floating around the table, so I'll get them to you when we have, when we have a break that we want to share with you in a, in the form of a card. So we'll do that at a break. Okay. So let's move on now to public comment.
No, she's not going to be. Okay. Okay. Let me explain. Good morning. For the record, my name is Joyce Bernheim, and I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the stakeholders who submitted joint testimony on Monday regarding the autism spectrum disorder eligibility criteria. We signed, we signed up Representative Hack to speak this morning, but she's unable to do so, so she will be back this afternoon, listen to the discussion, and we hope that you will hear her if she desires to speak at that time. I will refer to the stakeholders who supported the joint testament, the joint testimony as the joint testimony stakeholders. And I would like to, in that joint testimony, we addressed many of the issues and questions that got raised in the board's discussion in June with ODE staff. Since we submitted our testimony on Monday, there have been several developments, and so I would like to address those this morning. We understand that ODE is now conceding the appropriateness of incorporating the DSM-V criteria into its administrative rules on autism. However, we also understand that it will be proposing to create yet another stakeholder group to figure out how best to do that on the alleged grounds that there's no consensus in the field. Our response is there is no further debate that will be appropriate on whether or not to include the DSM-V criteria, and that we are urging the board to vote on that aspect of the autism eligibility rules today, and then allow ODE to go ahead with a stakeholder group limited to the issues related to the evaluation process, not the criteria, but the process, and to give OD a deadline of March eight, 2018 to come back. As we showed in our June testimony, ODE lacks rulemaking authority to define the medical condition of autism. It's crystal clear from the legislative history that when Congress established autism as a distinct eligibility category, it was referring to the medical condition and not to a legislatively created category that the United States Department of Education and the 50 states were authorized to define for themselves. That is one of the reasons why ODE is now looking to incorporate the DSM-V criteria into its rules. Given this legal posture, there's no justification for changing the DSM-V criteria in an ODE work group. Even if ODE had the authority to pass judgment on which features of the DSM-V criteria to throw out or modify, ODE simply lacks the expertise to do so, given the tremendous scientific scrutiny and field testing these criteria have already received. Nancy Lawson will address the consensus within education and the other stakeholders that currently exists in favor of the DSM-V. The important point here, though, is that rulemaking is not a popularity contest, nor has it ever been deemed necessary to have 100% agreement on any set of rules published by an administrative agency. For this reason, no further stakeholder group, or work groups on this topic are necessary. And we urge the board to put to bed this 11-year controversy this afternoon. The second aspect of the eligibility rules that the joint testimony stakeholders have sought to revise relates to the evaluation process. With respect to the type of histories to include, we have submitted testimony about that, but we also believe that further discussion is warranted in a stakeholder group. With respect to the kinds of current assessments to include in the evaluation process, we have proposed the assessments that were taken directly from 2015 U.S. Department of Education guidance on this topic. The only question that has been raised is the type of sensory, sensory evaluations to include. We agree that that is also appropriate for a stakeholder work group to resolve. And I understand that our proposed resolution has been or will shortly be distributed to you for, I see that you have it, for your consideration. The first piece, all it does is incorporate the DSM-V criteria. That's all it does. It doesn't, it does not address any of the other issues on the table. The second and third resolutions on the, on the last page say, go ahead and have a work group that come, make sure that you come back to us within a reasonable period of time. And we also think it's very important to include a developmental pediatrician and a clinical psychologist who are, have expertise in the area of autism diagnosis, because we are talking about an evaluation process for a complex neurodevelopmental disorder. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nancy Lawson?
And you have an email copy as well.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Chair Martinez, board members, and various stakeholders here, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Nancy Lawson, and I come before you wearing several hats related to the topic at hand. I'm an educator on an autism evaluation and training team, serving four districts in Southern Oregon. Earlier this year, I established a company that serves families and educational entities. I also now serve as the chairperson for the Oregon Commission on Autism Spectrum Disorders. When I spoke to you before in June, I was the subcommittee chair on assessment. These roles bring me into direct contact with parents who are trying to navigate a broken system that frequently requires three different evaluations: education, medical, and social agency, to provide services for their child. I agree with the IDEA's two-pronged approach, which asks two questions: does the child have a disability, and does the child need specially-designed instruction? That's not a question at hand with any of the stakeholders. Stepping back in time for a moment, I interviewed two educators who were directly involved in the development of the current autism OAR. I was impressed to hear that in 1994, Oregon was considered on the cutting edge of autism evaluation and programming. The current OAR adopted in 1994 incorporates the diagnostic categories from the DSM-IV. There have been a significant amount of research since 1994 that has led to the current scientifically sound criteria presented in the DSM-V. We need to adopt the current language as it represents the most accurate descriptors of this disability. The criteria will pose no difficulty and are comprehensible for educators and families. Historically, efforts coalesced around the misidentification of children with autism in 2006. In 2008, ODE was part of a legislative work group that issued findings around misidentification. This, along with related topics, resulted in the governor establishing the Oregon Commission on Autism. The commission, let's see, the commission, including its ODE representatives, formally recommended adoption of the DSM criteria in 2009. Five years later, in 2014, I was asked to be part of the ODE-sponsored autism eligibility work group, established to complete a walk, a crosswalk between the DSM-V, IDEA, and the current OARs, and then make a recommendation. In March 2015, the vast majority of members recommended the adoption of the DSM-V language. The recommendation languished until this year. Most recently, OD crafted a survey whose nearly 200 participants represent a full array of stakeholders. Seventy-eight percent of respondents support the adoption of DSM-V criteria using the language ODE presented. There is one consistent thread through time and across stakeholders: the adoption of the DSM criteria. What value is there in continuing the dialogue? Stakeholders are in agreement with the criteria. I'm asking the board to move forward with a vote to adopt the DSM-V criteria for autism. Let's bring Oregon to where we began in 1994, on the leading edge of eligibility and educational program. Thank you for your consideration.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need 20 copies. Good morning. For the record, I'm Toby Rates, Executive Director of the Autism Society of Oregon and the mother of two children on the autism spectrum. I'm testifying to ask that the board vote today to approve inclusion of the DSM-V criteria as set forth in the form of resolution the joint testimony stakeholders have submitted to you today. We further ask that the board direct ODE to establish a stakeholder work group to address the other outstanding issues concerning the evaluation process, and to include in the group a developmental pediatrician and clinical psychologist who are highly experienced in autism diagnosis. Included in your packets was a set of PowerPoint slides, the second page of which quotes the precise language of IDEA that is at issue with respect to the DSM-V criteria. The statute itself clearly establishes a two-pronged test. Question one: does the child have a named disability? And question two: does the child need special education and related services by reason thereof? I think we can agree that these are distinct questions, and that, as we have argued, the answer to the first question requires use of the DSM-V criteria. In our June testimony, we showed how ODE's current eligibility rules lead to denial of eligibility to students with autism who would qualify for special education but for the scientifically unsupported requirement that every child with autism have significant sensory issues. We explained that educators are missing critical needs of students with autism because the current rules don't clarify what those needs are. And we gave you examples of how students mistakenly identified with autism are receiving inappropriate services. Every day that goes by, many, many Oregon students are being denied a free and appropriate public education. And every family that has been battling inconsistent criteria among Oregon agencies has had further stress added to our already significant challenges of parenting and getting the right services for our children on the autism spectrum. Please bring this conflict and waste of resources to an end by voting today to adopt the DSM-V criteria. And please also set a deadline of March eight, 2018, for ODE to return to you with revised rules on the types of history that should be taken and their current assessments that should be performed in an autism eligibility evaluation. Our students and families are waiting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gordon Clay?
My name, for the record, is Gordon Clay with zeroattempts.org, Brookings, Oregon. October is Bully Prevention Month. Nationally, more than one of every five students or 20% report being bullied. For Oregon, the 2016 Oregon Student Wellness Survey showed that 46%, 46%, 49%, and 37% of sixth, eighth, and eleventh graders were bullied in just the last 30 days. Bullying has become an epidemic of epic proportions. StandForTheSilent.org has a list of over 55,000 children who have been, who have taken their lives in the last seven years due to being bullied. That's almost one child per hour for the last seven years. Over 3.2... Over 3.2 million students are victims of bullying each year, or six per second. Adult intervention: 4%. Peer intervention: 11%. No intervention: 85%. This may be because teachers and administrators haven't received training to recognize the signs of bullying, or they don't know what to do when they see it. Kids who are obese, gay, or have disabilities are 63% more likely to be bullied than other children. Music and theater students face a significantly greater risk than their nonarts peers. One of 10 students dropped out of school because of repeated bullying. We have at least one professional family in Brookings who's selling their motel because of bullying of his grandchildren. He can't get anything done. Harassment and bullying have been linked to 75% of school shooting incidents, and every 30 minutes, a teenager attempts suicide due to bullying. In Oregon, according to the affirmation -- aforementioned survey, 10, 17, and 18% of sixth, eighth, and eleventh graders say they seriously considered suicide, and 6, 9, and 8% said they actually attempted suicide in the last year. And it's getting worse. There's a chart that I have proposed for you will show over the -- since 2010. Every year, it goes up with those figures. Granted, the board issued a nice press release on March 24th. Chairman Martinez Jr. said, "We are sending a strong message that Oregon schools are to be safe, inclusive environments for students, families, employees, and the whole community." However, currently, the majority of Oregon public school students are not protected from being hazed, harassed, intimidated, bullied, mini-ed, or cyberbullied. Yes, there are policies, JFCF, but that only protects members of the protected class. For everyone else, all the school district needs to have is a policy. There are no consequence -- if there are no consequences, that they are followed. I hope that the Board of Education chooses to do something about this dilemma before we lose more students to suicide and more families who choose to move their professional skills and their children to a safer state. Finally, while OAR requires all Oregon students to be taught CPR from 7th to 12th grade, of over 600 school policies, the word "suicide" is not mentioned once. If anything should be addressed in both student and administrative training, it should be suicide awareness and prevention. And just a side note, five days or less billboard just west of High 5 on 42 in Windsor. So there -- a really neat billboard, if you haven't seen it, to break down, you know, get kids to stay in school. Please do not -- do whatever you can to reduce or better yet eliminate bullying in every aspect of our public schools, which in itself will help us get to the goal of zero suicide attempts.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Lyndon Esbeda.
Good morning, State School Board and Superintendent Gill. For the record, my name is Lyndon Esbeda, and I'm here this morning to discuss the administrative rule regarding your discrimination appeal process. Currently, the process is extremely cumbersome. It is inequitable, it lacks oversight, and accountability to ensure evidence of discrimination is actually addressed in the state of Oregon. It puts parents and students in vulnerable positions, working with -- trying to work this out with school administration, as school administrators do have typically more resources and legal knowledge on what is discrimination. Through a records request, you did get a copy of some paperwork, including testimony that came in this morning. We received ODE investigation findings for Brookings and Medford School Districts. ODE has done a remarkable job in these investigations and in the reports, page after page, on where discrimination happened and when it happened. In addition, if districts violated more rules than just discrimination, they pointed out in the complaint, from creating better complaint procedures within the school district to better enforcement if discrimination did happen. It was pointed out, the problem is, however, it then goes up to the parents and to the students to work with the school administration to not only address findings of illegal discrimination, but to also try to work out everything else that's wrong with the school district. We are very -- so my question is, does the State Board of Education honestly believe it's a job of parents and students to not only fix illegal discrimination by themselves, but to also fix every governing rule and policy at a school district level? We're very happy and grateful to ODE for answering no. And they have acknowledged that the process needs to be changed. With seven active appeals currently under investigation in Oregon, the process needs to change sooner rather than later, and I'm asking the board to put the revision of this rule on your December agenda. I currently have an appeal under investigation against the Beaverton School District at all five comprehensive high schools. I have that appealed due to the very first ODE requirement of approving one, which is all attempts to resolve the issues with the district didn't work. Every meeting became ineffective, personal, and unprofessional. This resulted in not only losing all trust in district administration, but created a very difficult relationship moving forward. It is for this reason I have no intention of entering a mediation with a district if evidence of discrimination is found. In addition, I don't believe that it's my job to make district administration happy on their own discrimination. They're breaking the law, and OD has proven it. So I don't understand why I have to then sit down with them and try to make them happy. I don't know how to do that. State law and your own policies required by statute, rule, and directive state two things. A person may not be subjected to discrimination in public elementary or secondary education. And that it's not the job of parents or students to ensure compliance of this law, but the job of the State Board of Education. So I do hope that you put this in your December agenda, so we can fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dan.
Yerdenak. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Dan Yerdenak. I'm an information technology professional here in Oregon. I graduate of Oregon Schools. I'm the parent of a middle school student. My father was a middle school science teacher. And I have also devoted much of my time since 2008 to autism, socioeconomic, and gender advocacy here in Oregon. I'm here today to appeal to you with great urgency to add an item to your December board meeting. Specifically, problems have been brought to my attention regarding the Oregon Department of Education's administrative rule 581-021-0049, which is the hearings and appeals procedure. Its intent, I suppose, is to address prompt resolution of complaints of discrimination. In its current form, however, the administrative rule does not serve in this capacity, except for a select few who have the financial means and endurance to weather a protracted process that repeatedly directs victims of discrimination to meet with the very same people who have perpetrated acts against them. Worse yet, even those few who are able to endure the process do not have the opportunity to ensure that long-term changes can be made that would ensure no one else experiences the same kinds of discrimination. In a 2015 American Psychological Association publication titled "Stress in America: The Impact of Discrimination," the authors noted that adults with a disability are twice as likely as adults without a disability to say that their life has been harder because of discrimination. They later disclosed that 47% of adults report experiencing major forms of discrimination, which may have included a teacher or advisor discouraging them from continuing their education. Perhaps most importantly, however, the authors note that all groups appear to do better when they have emotional support. Looking at the current procedure outlined for administrative hearings and appeals, one can see quite quickly that the most obvious end result for an individual who steps through this process is to end up ostracized from the community. What little follow-up data we have been able to obtain suggests that many who complete this procedure end up moving out of the communities in which their discrimination claim originated. Surely, this is not the outcome desired by ODE, and it definitely does not provide individuals or groups with the necessary emotional support. Finally, we are having a great deal of difficulty encouraging women to enter and remain in information technology careers because of discrimination. My experience in K-12 education is showing me that we are first failing to provide the necessary educational environment for young women to believe in a discrimination-free world. And OAR 581-021-0049, in its current form, is yet another indication of this. Please, add this to your next board meeting. Industry, community, and government organizations are ready and willing to contribute to a meaningful revision of this rule, but we need your prompt attention to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Margaret DeLacy.
My name's Margaret DeLacy. I'm here on my own behalf. I live in Portland, Oregon. And I just wish to encourage you to support the consent agenda regarding the standards reporting by districts. We have some excellent rules in the state, but as you've already heard, we're falling down on ensuring that districts are held accountable for following those rules, and I think this would at least contribute to addressing that problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie Dorr.
My name is Stephanie Dorr. I'm a mother of three, and I live in Clarkmoss, Oregon. And I came here today regarding Rule 581-022-1440. I am addressing you as a very concerned parent regarding this rule. I just found out about it a couple weeks ago. And, you know, let me ask you a question. Do you like anal or oral sex? Do you feel that's an inappropriate question? I do. But yet, that's what you want to teach our children, K through 12? When I read this rule, I thought it was for college, not for K through 12. I was truly dumbfounded that you would even consider this as a rule appropriate for the teaching of our K through 12 children. Our tax dollars are best spent in an area that the state has no business in, our children's bedrooms, or their sexual behaviors. Since when did it become the role of government to teach our children this type of behavior? This appears to be agenda aimed at teaching our children something that the state has no right to teach young minds. My 18-year-old, a recent graduate of Cleveland High School, I asked her one question. If you only had two choices between shelter or food, which would you pick? She chose shelter. You can live without shelter, you cannot live without food. Sex and hurt feelings won't matter during a natural disaster, war, or poverty, or homelessness. The waitress, the truck driver, the road construction worker, the secretary, they work hard and pay their hard-earned tax monies for our education of our children. Then they send them to public school, and this is the best our education leaders have to offer us? It's appalling. How does this type of teaching solve our problems of today or tomorrow? It is not the job of the school district to teach the everything to our children. The government has overstepped its authority in this area, and I respectfully request that you remove this ruling, or you will give me and our fellow citizens no choice but to proceed with further actions. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
That is -- is there anybody else that signed up or that came in that wanted to provide public testimony? Okay, that's the end.
Okay, thank you. And just a note for the board, we had some public testimony earlier on the autism rules that we moved to the fall from our June meeting. The board is not scheduled for a vote on those rules. We did have a leadership discussion about the timing of a board vote, and given that a lot has transpired between June and now, including the most recent testimony that we received, leadership felt it was important to have further discussion of board sentiment around those rules today before a formal vote. So I'm hoping that the conversation is useful and connects to some of the testimony we received, both today and along the way. But we felt it needed to have some more discussion, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, since that was part of the testimony, was about voting. So I wanted to make sure you knew what we were slated to do as of now for today. Okay? So let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda with Jessica's prompt earlier related to Item E on the consent agenda. George.
I moved to remove Item 3E, Competitive Form to School Program Grant Process, from the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by George, seconded by Jerry. Is it adequate, Jessica, to remove the item for now, or do we -- do you want it for a time certain back on the agenda?
It'll be back in December. Yeah.
Okay. So the assumption here is the removal will that -- it will return to us in December. Okay, further discussion on the item, the motion, rather, to remove Item 3E? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. So now we're looking for a motion on the remaining consent agenda items.
Motion to adopt the remaining consent agenda.
Move to adopt by Miranda, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is now adopted. Thank you. Now we're moving on. Oh, we're doing pretty well.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit concerned about this afternoon because we're going to be losing some board members.
I know.
So we'll see. Last month, we actually scored some extra, gave you some minutes back, so we'll see how the day progresses. Do we need a quick break? At the risk of existing things, could we try to stick to about maybe five minutes? Just a quick leg stretch, restroom break, and then we'll transition to our work session component. Actually, why don't I adjourn the board meeting, since we're going into formal -- informal work session? So we are adjourned for the formal meeting until 1 o'clock after lunch. Thank you. And we'll take a quick five-minute break before we have a work session. Convene our work session. As the board knows, the work sessions are more informal, a chance for the board to work on very specific issues that we dealt with in our agenda to get a little bit deeper into content. We have had a series of work sessions, starting from our retreat, related to board working agreements. I know OSBA calls up operating agreements, and there'll always be working agreements to me, and also around our policies and procedures manual, and then more broadly around this issue of governance that I raised. So we wanted to do today, we have all those pieces we're working on, but what we wanted to do today is to take a little bit more time with the operating agreements. We have a draft of this. We had an initial draft, and I know there's been some work that's gone on to this before. Colt and I also had some discussion about this, and I for sure want Colt's fresh-eyed perspective about the working agreements. And so I thought we'd do is have Jessica kind of give us an update on where we are with these, maybe some of the changes that have been discussed or made, and then have some open conversation with the board about where -- sort of where we go from here from the working agreements. One thing I wanted to say at the front end is to -- want to think, issues I've had with this, is to try to be really focused on what we're trying to achieve with this document versus other is to try to be really focused on what we're trying to achieve with this document versus other things that we've been doing. And I think right now, the documents are still a little bit confusing about what we're trying to accomplish with it. So I think it might help us to try to again be really discreet and clear about the goal here. And I would just, if I were to operationalize it from our conversations, this document, the working agreements, as opposed to these other things that we've been doing, is a place for us to espouse our informal work agreements we make with each other about how we will communicate, how we will raise issues through the board leadership, how we will process decisions that we've made, how we will speak about those decisions so that we're aligned as a body in our work. So this is not the same as our legal roles and responsibilities, although it sometimes can bump into them. Like, are we allowed to ask board members to do X, Y, and Z? Sometimes comes up. But this is really more about our informal culture. Colt and I had, I think, a really good conversation about like, well, where's our decision-making process in this? And in my mind, the decision-making pro, like how we, for example, how we've positioned equity in decision-making, that's elsewhere in our values, mission, goals. It's, it's reinforced by how we put equity into our docket. It's not sort of what this thing is for. This is really about our working agreements. But, but you might not disagree with that, but I think it's important that we, we make sure we're clear about what goes in here and what doesn't. And I think I've continued to struggle with that as I've looked at the drafts, which is why we wanted to have more discussion before another draft was made. So I think that's the intro for me. Maybe we can hear a little bit from Jessica about where we are with this and what things she's thought of. And then maybe we could hear a little bit from Colt and then have some open discussion. Okay? Does that make sense, board? Glazed eyes and head nods is, I guess, what I get. So I'll, I'll take it. Yeah. Jessica, you want to?
Yeah. So what I'll do, just kind of go over the docket that I passed around, which sort of gives you a little bit of history as to where the board, how this came about. So back in May of 2017, board staff submitted, submitted a draft retreat agenda for the board's consideration. As part of that retreat agenda, the board signaled to staff that they wanted to focus a couple of hours of the retreat on operating agreements. So what we did was hired and contracted with OSBA staff to come and facilitate a conversation around operating agreements. You know, what, what sort of items you wanted in these operating agreements. And after the retreat, they submitted a draft, and then I presented that draft to board leadership, and they provided several comments to me specifically. So what I did was, based on the comments received, I looked at several local board operating agreements, and I also reached out to the NS, the National School Boards Association to see if other state boards of ed were, had any type of operating agreement. So what I did was, and what you have here is sort of a second draft based on the other agreements that I've seen, which is a little, it's, it's a lot different than what was originally submitted. And it's a little bit different just because the feedback that I got from leadership was that we needed to be very precise about, you know, what, what, how you wanted to communicate, communicate with each other, making sure that there wasn't confusion around your roles and responsibilities. So the operating agreements is an opportunity for you to do that. I think the first draft, while it was great, and OSBA did a fantastic job of sort of capturing some of the values that the board espouses, it didn't really go into details about how you wanted to communicate, how you, how you wanted to communicate with each other, what the decision-making process looked like for you. So what's before you now is sort of that second draft. This is not perfect. This is really just meant for you to react to it so that you can shape and form it on however you want it to be. So those are the comments that I have. I'll pass it over to Colt.
So if you haven't had a chance to look at this yet, how many people have had a chance to review this? The draft that Jessica, okay, good. So most of, most of us have. If you compare it to the first one we got, you, you will definitely see that the changes. So I really appreciate the, the work. It gives us a much more concrete sort of point to discuss. Colt, do you want to add some general thoughts before we dig into the document?
Sure. I'll, I'll keep it short and then general, and then I have a couple of specific ones that I'll wait until that time comes around. What I recognized early on and contacted Charles around is that what I didn't see reflected in here was what you all do bring to your board service at every meeting that I've seen, and that is that equity lens. And so you just don't see that represented here. And then that conversation with Charles is, became clear that there are other places where that exists currently and would continue to exist. And so, so I sort of withdraw that, that piece. We do, we do recognize though, a few values in different places in here, and so I don't know if we have the opportunity where we're expressing values such as data-driven decision-making, we might also want to include equitable database decision-making, that kind of thing.
And one that I had after we talked, Colt, and it was a really helpful insight for Colt, knowing how we worked, to look at this and said, well, where, you know, where's the equity commitments? And I said, well, they're there. They're in our values, vision, mission in a very precise way. But this sits apart from that. So it seems like one of the things that, one possible way that I was thinking after we talked, Colt, this is a little bit too much in the weeds of like what we should change, but I, I do think this is important discussion. We may want to, there is a premise here that in our working agreements with each other, we, we have, we commit collectively to those values, to that vision and mission and goals established by the whole group. And that, I think, is a strong way to connect this document with those other document pieces. And we could even include them here, or include them as an addendum, the current ones. But it does seem like part of our working agreements is to contribute on whatever ongoing review we have of vision, values, and mission, and goals, but also to commit to them because they're done collectively. We really do those by consensus. And that strengthens, I think, for me, the point that Colt's making, which is, yeah, we did develop them, but have we, are we signing on to them in a meaningful way? And this is a place to do that because it is about our informal commitments to each other.
But yeah. So, and I don't know if this is a good way to do it, but as I looked at this, one of the ways I thought that you could capture that, because I'm not sure it says it elsewhere, was either through the piece about operational and decision-making. And an example might be, for example, under the board's jobs description. Item 6 talks about careful consideration when you make decisions and listening to all perspectives and so forth. And I don't know that this is specific, but one of the ways I thought about it would be, if you were to say, for example, we will operate as representatives and make decisions in the best interest of the state, consistent with our adapted mission and values and the use of the equity lens. That then seems to put it in place for the rest of the...
Yeah, so it sort of captures both what I was saying,
Right.
but also, you know, integrating it into the decision-making process. I, I think that's reasonable, but it seems good to call out, and this is the right place to do it for me, that we don't just have a vision, mission, we commit to each other to be guided by it. And this is the place to do that. I think that, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Jessica, I could figure out where the right place and how to do that, but at least say that we're committed among ourselves that as we make decisions, the mission and values and the equity lens are paramount as a part of our deliberations and processing.
So, yeah, it's a very good point. Why don't we dig into, I suggest we might go by section maybe. Is that helpful? So why don't we dig into them by section and just things that popped out to you? Things that you think are particularly important, things that are missing, things that seem to need some wording tweaks? Kimberly? So we're, let's start with the job description.
The first one, yeah. And I'm not sure if this is where this should go, but in looking at number five, it made me wonder if there's, where there, if we, if we need to call out something about our relationship to the executive officer? And, yeah. I know, that, that's not clear in the operating agreements, and I feel like that this is, that's a place to, to show the same sort of working agreements and mutual respect from the board to the executive officer and back and forth.
Yes.
I can certainly, I can certainly add that. And I think the reason why I didn't is because in statute, dear executive officer is the deputy superintendent of public instruction. So then he then delegates, or they delegate those duties on to another member. But, you know, if you want to get more specific, then...
It's, it's a good example of, like I mentioned, or like where it bumps into a little bit of governance and a little bit of roles. But I do agree with Kimberly, where we call out the respect the deputy superintendent's responsibility to manage the, the department, that's reasonable. But it also should be clear what our, our, again, relational, relational responsibilities, given our statutory oversight. So we're, it's not saying that. It only says one part of this, that we respect the autonomy and independence or the role. But I think it should be clear also about our responsibility to provide the oversight that is required by statute. And I know that, I think all the deputy superintendents we've worked with would want that to be in there. So, so again, I don't want to bump into the citing statute and all that stuff here, but I do think that Kimberly's right. This needs to be a little bit fuller to reflect those other parts of the, of the model.
And the...
On that one, yeah.
For Kimberly's suggestion, one of the things that we do in school districts often when they are of any size is add in after the superintendent language or designate. So we could see a few places in here where that would fit, and then, then it would roll over to the executive officer as well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point. Yeah.
The reason, the reason it came up was because of something that would occurs later on, where we talk about when concerns or problems arise, communicating one-on-one with a board member, you know, board member to board member, but that should also include like, you know, don't include the whole group when you have a problem or concern with, you know, our deputy superintendent either. Like, that should be a one-on-one conversation, I think. So, and, and or designate.
Okay.
I jumped ahead, but it's, that's...
No, it's, yeah, that's a, that's a good connection. Okay. Other thoughts on the job description?
Yeah. Number seven, value the role we play in the state and represent the entire state when possible by attending school and community functions. So I just wanted to kind of hear what people thought about that, because my natural place is where I live, you know? But, you know, it's a big, if we go by congressional district, you know, so there's not like a natural, I guess, for me, you know, flow, okay, I'm just gonna go to, you know, a school and, but what's my role and responsibility there? And, you know, besides freaking everybody out that I'm in the building, you know, that kind of thing, and then they roll out the red carpet, so to speak. And, but you know what I mean? And so that was just kind of like, I don't know if there's, I know it's just a general statement, but maybe it's somewhere else the structure behind that. I know we, in the past, we were thinking of going, you know, try moving, we do move around the state. May or may not visit schools, you know, that kind of thing. But I just, that's really not, when possible, is like, well, it's probably not really possible unless I'm intentional about it, you know? I put it on my calendar, but I still don't understand why would I go, right? I mean, you know, I could pop into Taft High School, you know, I mean, just, but what is that really? What are we trying to get with that? I know maybe insight and all that kind of stuff, but maybe it's around what our goals are? You know, how, how is it tied to, to just our work?
I wonder, I wonder...
I just want to hear what people think about that.
And maybe it's the piece that says represent the entire state. Because I really read, even though it says state, I read this as representing the Board of Education.
Yes.
When you, because like when you go to your local school board and you're there as a state board member or attend OSBA or those kinds of things is what I saw kind of fitting in here. And you're really, there is, like when you go to NSBA, you're representing the Oregon State Board of Education.
It also seems like you focus on attending school, I mean, it's just also too narrow.
Yeah.
I, I wonder, and to Anthony's more specific point, like some of, some of the board are actually represent technically congressional districts, although you might not think about it that way. Other board members are actually at large, so it's not even true that we all represent a part. The, the other thing is, I wonder if that, like, attending is really about a commitment to being accessible, to, to stakeholders in communities, in districts, to commit to listening and participating in where, where, as opposed to like attending events. Because I actually think there's lots of things that, I mean, people can call, Anthony, I know they call you, because they want to talk about something, or you schedule a meeting or coffee. You're not, not just, just attending in a formal event. And I do think this is more about, it seems to me the spirit of this is more about accessibility and a commitment to listening to stakeholders. That seems to maybe be what we're trying to capture here. And then maybe we should follow up more concretely with Anthony's point, which is we do some things as a board around traveling and visiting, spending board meetings in other, in districts and visiting schools together. But should we be doing in our own individual board activities? Should we be taking, committing ourselves personally to certain kinds of things? And if so, where and what? Do we have any specific expectations for board members? Like, you should be able to count, you know, five things over a year that you did on purpose to be present, listening, meeting, having a phone call, going to an event, it might be a series of things, but maybe we should. I don't know, I don't think that specificity goes here, but it might be worth a conversation about, oh, how would we do that? Do we want to make, make a part of our regular individual routine that we commit to that, to each other on behalf of the board? And knowing that when we're doing that, we are, you're not just Anthony there, you are, you're providing a link with those communities, with the whole board. And I think that's also really valuable and important so that when they're meeting with Anthony, they don't, they don't see him as just Anthony, but like, oh, we had the Oregon State Board visit through Anthony. That's a powerful thing that we can all share responsibility for.
I mean, we go to, like, I'm going to Truck Board Project event, you know, that kind of stuff. There's just a lot of things, you know, and so my point was is that maybe it's, we need to expand that language.
Yeah, and we can make it, we can make it broader, and like Charles was saying, maybe it's a little bit too narrow. So then we can, I can think about using language that captures when you guys travel to OSBA, when you go to NSBA, or, you know, when, or when we go and do our, when you do your, your, your travels around the state as a board.
Yeah, I'd rather that it not be based on an expectation so much as opportunity, so that there wouldn't be an expectation that each board member would participate in five or six or those kind of things. I mean, there are various opportunities that occur throughout the state. Like, for example, OALO may have a conference to say, Anthony, could you come as a state board member? Or COSA could have something, and Jerry or someone, Tribe could have something, and I want a board member there, a person who they could say so-and-so from the state board of ed was here and so on.
Yeah, however we think about whether or not it makes sense to make ourselves numerically accountable, it wouldn't go here. It would be whatever we do as a follow-up, and I do like the idea of like keeping the language here to generally espouse that commitment as part of our job description or job duty to, to do that, to listen, to be available, accessible to stakeholders in the field.
I just, I wanted to say one thing about that.
Yes, please, Erica.
That word about accessibility is really, I think, what that one is meant to be about. I don't know that having you show up to an event where they roll out the red carpet is really effective for accessibility. So it's really more about them having a person that they know, they, you know what, I'm, I'm, I'm going to call him because I think he actually will listen to what I have to say, or I, I want to have this person at least know this is happening in my district so that they're aware of when they have that conversation. So if there's a way that you could reach out to districts and just say, hey, if there's something that you're wanting me to know about, we're having conversations about the following agenda items, we'd love your input. If there's a way that that... If there's a way that 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 uh contact can happen more regularly with the districts across the state um that would be helpful because I think especially the rural region where I come from, we assume um you know, you are attending events here where you live, but not necessarily across the state and and that that wouldn't be an expectation, it's more about contact contact and accessibility.
So um that was very, very helpful, I agree, so we'll make we'll make that change to that um section. Want to move on a little bit to the next section, seems like there's some meat there, we already had, I think, the recommendation that we in our decision making put a a specific reference to our values, vision and mission and the equity lens as guiding our decision making, we adhere to those. Um yes, and then let's go through some other specifics.
Can can you speak a little more to number seven under operational and decision making? Particularly thinking about the first phrase.
On the night the board is scheduled to make a decision?
Oh, the night it would be.
And I think I get that because most of.
It seems too specific, to be honest with you, it's.
Most stuff would have had a first reading though.
Right.
But the problem I have with the inference is that if something comes up in testimony from the public or even staff that may warrant a different question or different direction before the vote. I mean, it seems the options are to ask it to come back again or to say, can we at least amend this to reflect some of.
And I think that's very valuable and when I was reading some of the other operational agreements, what I what I when I saw this coming up in most of them, I think they were probably thinking about board members who the night before were making constant changes to the agenda or wanting to constantly add things at the very last minute. And while most and while most of the time here at ODE, we can get staff to come before you. Sometimes staff are not here, we cannot get the information before you on time.
But it seems it seems like
Yeah.
It seems like the distinction here um is between the agenda and the discussion, because it is common that you might we've had this happen a billion times where like in the moment
Yes.
suddenly I have an idea.
Yeah.
And that should not be disallowed when we're making a decision about something, because this is the place for those discussions, so I think this 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 point is really about a proposal, an agenda altering proposal. That's I think what we're trying to capture and it's not the night before, that seems a little bit too precise, the idea is that you we give notice to each other about agenda driving um issues, concerns, questions prior to board meetings so that they can be properly vetted by leadership, I think that's the idea, I don't want to squelch I have an idea, I have a proposal to make while we're making decisions because I do think that's why we're here and often we do come up with good ideas that no one thought of um and no one raised in our leadership and we didn't didn't hit us till the moment and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't stop that. So, does that make sense if we if we treat it that way, it seems like an easier way to deal with this? Yeah, Miranda?
Just a little bit more on this, I feel like this subject is kind of twofold, one, we're we're trying not to add things to the agenda the day before and kind of spin everything into disarray, but also I think it's worth noting and and possibly entrining in this somehow, that we should be trying to stick to the agenda topics um rather than things that are either not in the board's purview or something that deserves its own agenda item in the meeting, so I don't know if there's a way to capture that. Um but I feel like sometimes we go off course to a degree that is uh not helpful or we're not prepared to discuss yet. And so I I'd kind of like to see something about that of like making us making an effort to keep on on task.
I I like that and it seems like it would go here.
Yeah.
So it's and it's a separate bullet and it actually really helps the chair.
Mm-hmm.
If the whole board is kind of checking, we check each other a little bit, because what happens and I know Anthony has raised this and I think all of us have felt this, is that we end up spending too much time on something that leaves other agenda items without enough processing time and then all the time we have for them is taken up by a report from staff and our discussion is minimized, so the way to solve that I mean, we do try to work the agenda carefully and I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to be anticipatory, but it can really be hairy to go, oh, we're way behind and um so if we all do that, I think it will help, I really like that idea, so something about, we'll we'll write it, but it's something about the board all agrees to um do its best to adhere to the agenda and the the time allotted for discussion or propose alternatives so that we can work through the agenda, I think that's a really good thing to put in there and will make our work easier, certainly make the chairs work easier, yeah.
I'd like to get a clarification on number eight here.
I was just reading it.
My yeah.
My uh thought on this is, I believe when we were looking at our bylaws policy manual that it indicated that board members um could not abstain from an item as mentioned here, kind of unless there's a conflict of interest. And I uh I've wondered about that, um I've been in a situation I know other members have here where um either through a moral conviction or a confusion as to exactly which way you wanted to go that it did make sense to abstain. And so my my question is, are is it correct that we must vote on an item unless there's a conflict of interest? And if that's the case, then I I would strengthen that, if it isn't I'd like to see more flexibility there because I do think it's a viable option if it's allowed.
So the um the first of all, I think you're allowed to vote or non-vote. So in other words, we can't tell you to vote. But there is the 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 pressure here and I have seen this over my years and I've seen this in many other boards that when things get confusing or the decision is tough or we get nervous about sort of going on record when it's a difficult issue, the abstention is a safety valve. And I think that's what we want to avoid, for one, that we have an obligation to have enough courage to vote, whether we're agreeing or disagreeing, whether it's a change in direction of the overall board vote or not, where we can. So I think that we it's important that we put pressure on ourselves to lead. And if we sanction that if I feel uncomfortable I won't vote yes or no, it that is it is a problem for board functioning, so I I'm really concerned about opening up the door widely, I think it's really important that we vote. I don't think we can stop people from abstaining, to be clear, but I do think it's important that we vote. And I think if the reason is that we're confused then that needs to be, that needs to mean that we don't vote. So my my preference here would be to say, we have an obligation to ask questions to not vote until those questions have been properly resolved as a group and then to vote unless we are not able to vote. I think that would help primarily the second the second point that you raised, because we are often it seems like everyone else is ready but me and for me, this is, I just don't understand this enough. And so rather than stop everyone else, we sometimes are compelled to go I guess it's just me, so I'm gonna abstain. But that's not fair to each other and I I think if any one of us is confused about anything, there's probably it's probably true that someone else at least has that confusion even though they might have been willing to vote. So I would rather us commit to taking our time to resolve questions before a vote and then vote where we can. Knowing that you still have discretion and we can't make you do anything.
That makes good sense, that's that's good.
Miranda?
Um I'd just add to that that I think we've heard through some public testimony where people interpret abstentions to mean something. And I feel like because of the sort of vague nature of abstaining that we are perhaps inadvertently sending messages to the public about certain things and I think a clearer message of yes or no is is actually important to um what people are interpreting we do. Uh I I just want to add a little bit to this, um I think so an operating agreement to me, I'm gonna be an early lawyer here, I think we should all actually sign this. I think that that would give it more heft.
I like it.
Um but so I but that means that we are sort of beholden to it like a contract, right? So when I see cast a vote on all matters, I think about members who are not present uh uh for a meeting and cannot vote, I just think that maybe we could clarify that.
Yeah, we need, I think we need to rework this item in light of the discussion and let's come back to the question of signing it, I I like it, it's it's it's, you know, it's not a binding
No, but.
thing, it's an agreement, it shows trust in each other.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I think symbolically, I I I like that idea, we should come back to it at the end, but again, these are not, this is not like a legal.
Yeah, a lot of the local boards, they have um all the all the all of their members sign it as well as their superintendent signed it.
Yeah, it's a it's a powerful statement if we if we choose to do that, I agree. Okay, so that's a that's a really good point, um so.
Back to number seven for just a second.
Please, yes, Erica.
That that last sentence, um the try to avoid surprises, when I read that um it basically told me, hey, don't bring anything up new if you haven't talked to someone else about it on the board ahead of time. And I think that sends, you you know, I know transparency is one of the goals of the board and I think that sends kind of an odd message to not only the people here, but the people who are watching like, okay, well, they might have an idea, but they're not gonna say it because they haven't checked with anyone. Um it just, it's an odd phrase. And I know what they mean as far as don't make any new agenda proposals, but the try to avoid surprises, it's like I wouldn't want it to seem as if we're putting on a show and don't don't bring anything new up.
It seems like what, yes, so I think the main point here is around agenda surprises, but I think that the more broader point that I think we could capture is when you have a and a thought, an idea in advance of a decision making that is novel that could affect the agenda item that might be helpful for ODE to know, oh, here's a good idea. Um that's, there is a particularly when it's major and it comes to you early. I would rather as chair and I think leadership in general, we would probably all rather know that Erica had a thought about this topic for the last three weeks and we are discussing the agenda along the way and if there's a chance for ODE to be thinking about it before we sit together, it allows us to make more progress. Now, if it's an item that is, I I mean, we're not gonna vet it through leadership, we're not gonna make a decision, any kind of decision, but it does allow staff to come to the meeting more prepared, so if it's a set of concerns or is there a legal way to do X, Y, and Z, or can we solve the problem this way, that comes to you in advance particularly on major, like a major idea, it is helpful to have that at least brought through leadership because if there is some background work that staff can do to help facilitate that discussion, it makes us more effective, so that might be a little bit of the broader point, but just saying to have no surprises is
I think it's just a phrase.
is kind of a squashing sentiment in the context it's here. But we could, I think we should, we could be clear about the agenda part of surprises and then maybe have a bullet that says, you know novel thinking on important agenda items where they come early can and should be brought to board leadership, particularly if they involve research and um potential background for ODE staff.
And that would be, I think, a more positive way to put that other than avoid surprises.
Okay. Yeah, it's a it's a really good point. Other comments on this section?
This is great.
Okay, um let's move on to communication and um agreements. Number one has a typo around the borchai.
Borchai is delicious though.
Borchai, I got mine this morning.
You you now know what I was thinking about.
Yeah, exactly what this is written.
Um I have comments about number five. Um it looks like to create any social media account, we would need permission and I would hate to have to run my personal Facebook page through ODE, so I think it perhaps it needs to be
More clear.
A a public figure page or a pay uh social media associated with your identity as a member or something like that. I'm also wondering what members think about adding to this section of something along lines of um any public statements where you I self-identify as a board member, I'm thinking for instance of like if I wanted to endorse a, you know, a school board candidate, should I be allowed to put Miranda Summer comma state board member or not? You know, should should we all agree that that's something that should be run through you know, the the department or something, I don't know, I I just thought of it when I thought about these other issues.
I totally agree with you about the the social media thing, that the spirit of this and we need to work on the language. The spirit of this is simple, it really is about it comes back to like representing the board, that's really what what we're trying to figure out, so we need to make sure it doesn't mean that you have to pass by the board when you send a tweet in your personal thing or whatever, that's not what this is. And I wonder if to some extent, the the second point you made is more about a little bit of that point three, um which is not quite accurate either, seems like the third bullet should say except for the chair, first of all. Um no individual board member, blah, 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 has the authority to speak for the board and let and then the other thing is it should say unless delegated to by the board, because we do sometimes vote uh to send, can we send George across the street? We all agree to do that on behalf of the board because sometimes we want particular voices, so we might vote for someone to write something or speak on behalf of the board on something, so it seems like we should have that also at the end. And that kind of, I don't know, but it seems like in that is sort of the spirit of what we're supposed to do and it might be, it might be more in the when we when we communicate um in our role as board member, as board member, how we maybe there's a bullet in there we have to write that's not in there.
Yeah.
So is the the idea here is just to reinforce that um in our public any of our public presentation work, that we have a responsibility to make it clear that we are not speaking on behalf of the board. Some something to that effect. Our our roles and responsibilities legalize this language to some extent, but here it's more just making sure that we're constantly aware of the potential that we may be seen as speaking for the whole board and so we have to be active about clarifying that we don't. And we all do that, I think, I know, I've watched people do that. I'm very aware of this because I'm always talking to educational leaders and I I always have to start with this is just Charles, like, you know, I'm not giving you any any opinion of the board on this these things we're discussing, so I I I really do and and if if I am, then I try to make sure I'm doing that, like I am giving you the board's perspective about something.
There.
Yeah.
There are also, I mean, there also are times that are sort of out of our control too where, I mean, I was at an event for all hands raised and and they asked public officials to stand up and I I didn't and then they put a slide up and they had Kimberly Howard, Oregon State Board of Education, I was like I guess I need to stand up, but you know, they they sort of called me out in the room, but I was there.
That's totally appropriate, I think those are, those are things we should be thrilled about, you should take your ovation and um yeah, I don't, I I definitely don't want to create language here that makes that feel uncomfortable or honestly makes you feel uncomfortable that you're not allowed to give your opinions because you were invited to a chalkboard meeting or something, that's also a problem for me. So the trick is just to be like, there's always the risk that what I'm saying might be interpreted as a board position instead of an individual position and so I've just gotta be diligent about making those clarifications you know, when that risk arises, that's really the spirit, I think, of what we want to write.
So we're so we're rethinking it, like we're phrasing it in the in the positive of that as opposed to nobody can do this, but instead be be conscious of of how you are being identified.
Yeah, it might be that we need to be clear that no one speaks for the board except the chair, but then we need the. the chair. But then we need the positive, it doesn't mean that you can't speak. So, you know, individual board members have the right to express their opinions, to be acknowledged for their service as board members, to appear at meetings and give awards and things like that. Those are not voted on, you know. But must be diligent about the potential risk that their opinions are being framed as the voice of the board, and to clarify where appropriate. I mean, that's probably what we need to write, something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, those are, that's really, really good points. Okay, so we talked about the social media stuff. We got a little bit of work to do there. Other comments on this section?
I have a comment, Jerry, number six. I like the spirit of number six. And as a superintendent, when I had school board members who gave work to the staff without going through the channels, I very much disliked it. However, I find in our meetings, excuse me, there's times in the moment of a meeting that there's information that would be very helpful, or maybe information to receive before the next meeting. And I think it's still in the spirit of this, but I think it's appropriate to ask the deputy superintendent instead of the chair, is it possible that staff could consider bringing more information forward on X, Y, or Z, and let the deputy superintendent, who knows the workload better, and maybe the scope of the work that might be involved, to, you know, pass judgment on that.
You, this is a really good point, because I actually, that's common. In fact, I frequently hear Jerry saying, can we, can staff provide, you know, and I find that really useful. And I think it's different in that context, because when you say it here, I'm here, our whole board is here, and if we have a concern that it's potentially going to add more workload, it's sort of, we're all involved in the decision together. So it might be that the way to frame this. This is, this seems to me to be much more about what happens outside of meetings. So it may be like, in between meetings, this is the procedure. Because what I have noticed is that sometimes those requests, I know nothing about them. And yet, staff are being asked to do things by board members. And I think for staff, particularly if you don't go through the supervisory chain, and it wouldn't be necessarily true that board members even know what the chain is, I don't at various times. So they may not feel compelled to say no, and meanwhile, they're set to work by a board member. So I think that's, that's what we're trying to avoid. And it's mostly, I think, in between meetings where that risk is. But if you say in the middle of a meeting, hey, could we get more information about whatever, I think that's the right place. Either there, in a meeting, or through the board leadership, makes sense. And those requests ultimately really go through the deputy superintendent, who's responsible for delegating staff time. Because, you know, I don't have any, as chair or whatever, as a board member, none of us have any authority over staff time. The only, the only place where that's not true is in Jessica's, you know, role. And she still reports through OD. But, so, but direction of staff time really does come through the board leadership. So we'll make those changes. Good point. Okay. Anything else on this?
Jessica, just, I'm assuming that in those places where it just says superintendent, deputy superintendent.
Yeah, I've been noticing them, yeah.
Because I was going to say, does that mean that the real superintendent by law, the governor?
I'll go back and change those.
Yeah. So my only question about, about before we get to the next area is number seven. When a concern or problem arises, it's just so big. And it seems like this is trying to capture something about a interpersonal interaction or a potential, you know, personal conflict, not a policy concern. So it seems like we need to be a little bit more specific here. When a, when an interpersonal concern or social interaction concern arises within, between an individual board member, we agree to communicate with each other about that. And if it's not resolved, to work through the leadership to resolve it.
What about adding a charge to leadership to do something about it? Like, not something specific, but like some sort of responsiveness might be appropriate to include on that one?
So what do you have in mind?
Just, so communicate with the board chair and.
Who will?
Yeah, who will investigate, discuss something. It doesn't have to be huge, but just that, you know, it can't be completely set aside in some way.
Who will work with the parties? Sounds like I'm running a contract.
Who will facilitate, maybe?
Who will facilitate resolution? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think that's good to put the, make it clear that if we can't resolve an interpersonal conflict, that the board chair has some responsibility to take it on.
So just to make sure, so what this really is saying is when a concern or problem arises with another board member, then communicate it with you for you to resolve. Is that right?
It says if you're, if someone irritated you, you go talk to them. And we commit to talking to each other. And if that doesn't resolve the issue, that it comes to me or whoever's chair. And then the chair has responsibility to facilitate the discussion. And it puts the deputy superintendent in that potential role. And I like that, too, because it gives you more than one. I think it's important that the chair be involved, but what if it involves the chair? So I think that's, hopefully you would come to the chair first anyway, and that's the rule here. But it does give you multiple outlets. And these are just, these are, these are not like formal grievances. These are just interpersonal conflict. I was irritated. I felt stepped on, unheard, disrespected, that those, those things that could happen. They don't typically happen with this board, but it gives us a mechanism. Anthony?
Yeah, I just, I was wondering, so this is the one that caught my eye, that made me think of the, of adding some language around the deputy superintendent and/or a signee. And so I'm wondering if that, if that, if it's not just interpersonal between board members, but also board member to staff.
Oh.
Or is that, is that not a place for it? It couldn't be. We could add a.
I think that's a good point. Let me think. So why not just include the deputy superintendent in this, in this, first of all, in this, in other words, are you, the issue is if you have an issue with the deputy superintendent.
Or his signee.
Do we follow the same process? And I think their staff is a separate thing for a second. But I do think the collegiality of the spirit of this would make sense to me. In other words, if, you know, there was an interpersonal issue between Kimberly and Colt, and you needed to talk it out, it seems like that's our mutual agreement with each other. And then I would get involved if it's unresolved. Otherwise, I think it makes good sense and is protective of Colt to make sure we're committed to talking to him.
Yeah.
I think if it, if our, if the conflict involves another ODE staff person, I think in that case, it's, it seems like it should go, it should go through the chair and the deputy superintendent, as opposed to expecting.
The one-on-one.
The one-on-one, because there's a power difference. There's more vulnerability for staff. So I think we might want to say if a conflict arises with any other staff person within ODE, that those conflicts go through the board chair and the deputy superintendent.
But not to the whole board?
Not through the whole board, exactly. So that seems to be a way of, it would be a little different, because I wouldn't want us to go corner a staff person because they irritated us without Colt knowing.
That makes sense. That makes sense. And I also was thinking of protecting against that very thing.
Right.
But also protecting against sort of blanket sort of statements about staff members to everyone that's not, that hasn't yet been fully resolved between the person and the.
Yes. So this would create an obligation to not air those, those interpersonal grievances in the context of any of our, you know, discussions, because that is, you know, potential reputation harming and certainly trust harming. So, okay.
Point of clarification. So does this specifically have to be for the state board because we have advisors? So the way I kind of see this is we're always, we always communicate officially in this realm right here. But we also do have advisors, too. So do they need to be included in this? Or is this something like a different place and a different layer? Because we just specifically say board, 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 but.
I can certainly go back and add advisors, ex officium, when they're designated. I mean, that's entirely as to how you want to move forward. But you can be very specific if you want.
Well, I think it's a really good question. In my head, I assumed that the working stuff works for everybody.
At one point, I think I did have that.
It does say that. So board members are advisors and are ex officium.
For the net of this, cover it up. Through the whole language. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to.
If that's the case, it would be excellent for those people also to sign the.
Yes, if we decide we should do that. Right. Yep.
So you don't have to just keep repeating it. It's already.
And the only thing I would want to, and we can look at this later. I don't want to go through it right now. But I totally agree with this idea, and it was kind of true in my head. But I do want to make sure particularly for, for advisors, their, their roles, students, teachers, you know, they could be more vulnerable in some of these provisions. So I want to make sure that we look at it through that lens, too. So our, the idea is it will, will make these applicable to our advisors as well as board members, because it is about how we work together. But that will, we're going to have to look through it carefully with the eye towards it. Does this create vulnerability for advisors, given the roles that they play, and make sure that we protect that? So we'll look at that after we get to the next revisions in general. Okay, that's good. Do we want to move on to role of leadership? Okay, comments, questions, revisions here?
Number seven has a spelling error in it, unless we're talking about Kimberly's profile.
I think it's specified in that that the second vice chair will perform these duties when the chair and vice chair are not available.
Yes.
Right.
That would be funny. That's how you combat people in this world.
Exactly. Get behind me. I have perfume.
Pretty straightforward. Is there anything that you see as a leadership responsibility that's not captured in here, that's missing? Colters is something that you see in there? It seems like there is a response, a leadership responsibility to, I mean, we've said it in other places around approving the final agendas with, that's the whole board leadership. I also wonder if we might want to put in here a communication responsibility with the deputy superintendent, the chief education office, and other state governing boards and commissions. Because I do think that is something that all board chairs have done here. And I think if I didn't do that, or whoever was chair didn't do it, we'd be in trouble. So I think it might be good to put it in as a, here, as like, yeah, you have some, some special communication responsibilities in your, in your leadership roles.
I'd also like to add, and I think it's a really good practice, probably in the first, when we have our retreat, that the past year's agreements come forward, and they are looked at and modified if necessary, and then re-signed again, especially with new officers taking over, maybe heaven forbid, a new deputy superintendent. But that annual look, and for new board members as well, I think would be a good practice. And maybe somewhere in the preamble or towards the very end, we would indicate that we do that annually.
Okay.
Charles, added to your, I think what would become number nine on the communication responsibility across the different councils and commissions and chief ed office, also the planning for any joint meetings would fit in there.
Yeah, that's a, that is a very good point. Yeah, so it's not just communication. Okay, I like that. Anything else on board leadership responsibilities? Okay, deputy superintendent responsibilities? Yeah, Miranda?
I think about what the deputy superintendent does with us, and the most significant thing is the report at every meeting. And so I think I'd add something about, you know, informing and advising us about the department activities and goals and something like that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's useful. It also seems like, I'll see how Colt thinks about this, but it seems like it should be clear here, too, that one of the major roles as it relates to the board's connection with the deputy superintendent is to work directly with ODE to realize the board's goals, strategic goals, and vision mission. So that it, it's already bound up in the statutory relationship, but it does make it clear that we work together. But at the end of the day, the deputy superintendent has got a problem with what we've done, and they, but they know they have a responsibility to realize it. It forces us to come to the table to make sure we're on the same page. But I do think it's important that, it makes it clear that our, our decisions are not in a vacuum, that ODE has that carrying out leadership, knowledge, skill, and responsibility.
Just a pet peeve. I don't expect anybody to change it. I just, data-driven decisions drive me crazy. I mean, because I don't know that decisions are driven by data. I prefer data-informed decision-making versus data-driven. But I know that the Vogue terminology is data-driven.
Where are you seeing?
It's on number four. Yeah. So the, work with the board leadership to effectively bring information issues to the board so that it can make proactive, data-driven decisions and policy decisions. And that sounds very redundant.
How about just proactive?
Yeah.
Decisions informed by the best available evidence. Because even if you use the word data, it means charts and graphs, but evidence means lots of more. That's, that seems, I totally agree. And we can fix that.
So a couple more to suggest. I think on number four up above, facilitate orientation of new board members also becomes a responsibility of the deputy superintendent. So I think that's a partnership with the board leadership to do that. So I could see that appearing on both lists.
And I think the board administrator also has delegated responsibility to helping with that. So, yeah.
Another one is, the deputy superintendent does have a responsibility, whether we want it in these, this designation of roles or not, to represent the work of ODE and its staff on a national, state, regional, and local level, two partners, stakeholders, and communities. So there is some of that that is in this role. And then the final one, there's the section number three, work with the board to establish clear education, educational vision for the state of Oregon. So I do have a duty also to work with the governor. So I don't know if we want to put in there to work with the governor and the board to establish a clear educational vision for the state of Oregon, or if that's just implicit.
I wonder if we're overreaching. I am confident you do way more than what's on this list.
No, I know, yes.
And so I'm wondering if we're overreaching, because this is supposed to only be in the context of the board.
Okay.
Just. Just.
Yeah, I don't, I, I actually think putting the governor in there makes sense because we are, as a board, effectively the voice of the governor. Colt, as an appointee, is representing ODE, also does that. I think it's, it is implicit, but I like the idea of making it clear here. So I, I, yeah, I think that's, that's a reasonable change. Let me ask you a question too. I was thinking as Colt was assigning more things to his responsibilities. Is it a responsibility of the deputy superintendent to, obviously he's not, or she wouldn't represent the board perspective about anything. But it does seem to me that there is a responsibility having to do with sharing information about the board's vision, mission, goals, perspectives, general perspectives of the board. It's not representing the board. But I will tell you, I certainly, and I think we all depend on the deputy superintendent in his or her interactions in the system to kind of share where their board is at, without speaking for the board. And I do think that we should capture that, because it's a really important duty, I think, to do that well. Does that seem fair? Or does it seem too risky to entrust the deputy superintendent to do that?
Seems appropriate to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we just need to word it carefully.
At least if we've learned anything over the last few weeks, it's that our voice to the governor is gonna have to come through the deputy superintendent, it seems to me.
Yes. And, and since George raised that point again during the work session, I wanna, I will, I do want to make sure that I share with the board the communications on the change in the deputy superintendent office. I wasn't involved in those decisions. I don't suspect Colt was directly involved in those decisions. And of course, the governor's entitled to make the, the, make the moves necessary as superintendent of public construction for Oregon. So this is not about that. But I think it's important that you know that I wasn't involved in the decision. There wasn't like a lengthy period of back and forth awareness of what, how, how that situation played out. So I was informed, I guess I, slightly before the board was, in order to prepare some communications. But it wasn't, there wasn't back and forth. And there wasn't any, any sort of direct request for information during that process. So I do think that the, that bigger question about the, the role of deputy superintendent and its role vis a vis the board is one that is in the part of the overall governance discussions that are going on in Oregon. And I think it's important for us individually, in whatever ways we feel about this, to, you know, weigh in. But I think as a board, it's important to participate in, in at least to know about the discussions that are occurring around the looks at the overall governance structure. You know, is there, is that, is this, is this a, does this work well? Is this an example of a problem? If it's a problem, how would we, what, what kind of work would we want to propose that would change it? But it is a, it is a concern for me too. So I, I want to, George raised this, but I want to share, I have my own concerns just about. Where, where is the board in these kinds of decisions? And how do we make sure that we do our delegated work? And also not get in the way of the authority of the governor or anything like that in doing her job? So, but I think that's a really important issue.
Just as a point of information, was the way we were supposed to be informed from Salam's letter, was that what informed us about what happened?
Was that, was that the way you were personally informed? We, I had some discussion with the chief education office about having direct phone calls with board members that were going to be carried out through the chief education office before the written, you know, the written notice came. And it may have been possible in some cases and not in others because of the, because of the timing. So I don't know who might have gotten a call or not gotten a call.
So I don't, I don't know if individual calls were made, but I just, so just statutorily, if the deputy superintendent were to be fired, it is in statute that the board of education needed to be pulled into an executive session and that the governor needed to, you know, get advice from the board. But in the situation, the deputy superintendent.
Obviously didn't happen.
Yeah, he, he resigned and so.
So it's a, there's a different process in terms of the board's role. But again, if we have opinions about that as it relates to the, the way in which the governance structure is, has emerged, we should, we should be clear together. And, you know, the way I continue to think about this is how can the board do what it can do to strengthen and support the leadership in the state? And this is an example for me where I do think there's a part here that is frustrating to me because I feel like we can be playing a more active role in providing direct support and feedback along the way, including, you know, much more direct connection with the role of deputy superintendent. But this is how it's set up right now. So it's helpful to get a little bit of clarity on where the board might have been called in together for some kind of a session. But, but yeah, so I, I do think that this issue is one that we're gonna have to continue to engage in. It's, it's sort of, gets triggered by our discussion of the operating agreements, but it is about these bigger discussions around governance. I do, you know, Colt has been in those discussions already in his role. Lindsay and his leadership is really engaged in those discussions. And I might, just so you know, my personal sense is the stakeholdership around that is really about trying to set up a system that's going to support students. And so that, at least that's encouraging to me. But there are, there are these areas where it seems like not clear, and we need to fix some of that. Kimberly?
I, I would have a question of just sort of more information needed around how other boards and commissions are set up to support or be the governance of a, a director of an agency.
The agency directors and the other, and the other parts of the machinery report directly to the board.
They do, okay.
This is very unique.
This is very, okay.
And it's, you know, one of the questions that has been raised in, in the discussions we've had is about that. And is this the right model in K-12, given that that's not what's happening in ODE to the board? Relative, that's not what's happening elsewhere in the district. And there's, it's worthy of discussion about advantages, disadvantages, pros and cons, for sure. But right, those other, those other, the HEC, the early learning council, those, those directors all report directly to their, to their governing boards.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I think, wow, we're five minutes early.
I know.
Don't say that out loud. Somebody's gonna get in trouble later this afternoon. Jessica, I want to thank you for your work in, in helping to shape this, refine it from the earlier drafts. It sounds like with these revisions, we might have, do, do folks feel like this might be ready for a first read? With some, some of this revision work? And it might mean that there's some more tweaks, but that we would do a first read? Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing a positive, so maybe we can wrap that up. Jessica, before we lose you, completely seems like these are pretty doable. And then I assume that we, this has been sort of vetted around the roles and responsibilities, the legal roles and responsibilities, and is not in any conflict with statutory requirements or anything like that at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there anything that would preclude us, at least that you're aware of right now, from deciding as a board that we would sign our names to it as a, as a statement of commitment to each other?
Nope.
I did hear a fair amount of sentiment that that sounds like a good idea. Do people, do we have a kind of consensus that that would be a good idea for us to sign on the dotted line here as a commitment to each other? Because it's, again, these are not legal contracts exactly, but it is, it does make us accountable to each other in a, in a more specific way. Do people feel good with that?
I think we should hold hands while we sign it.
I like that. So if, if I'm, I'm kind of hearing yes, so why don't we set it up that way? And we'll have, we'll have a chance for a little more discussion when we get it for a first read. But we'll set it up with the idea that we would all sign it. So, and you're comfortable with that too, Colt, because it would have your, your signature too? Okay, great. Yes, George?
Just a question about the agenda and how flexible some of it is or not. Because I heard several people say they had to leave early. And I'm wondering, are there some things on the agenda that those folks who need to leave early?
So I believe there's, so Miranda and Anthony are leaving at lunch. So you, you need four board members present for quorum.
Jerry said he had to leave.
I'm here till 4:15.
So you'll have five board members present for quorum.
One? How, what? We'll have one. Who's leaving at lunch?
Miranda and Anthony.
Okay.
So then there's five of you left.
Five until four, and then we have.
And action items are at 1:00 PM, and you only have two.
Okay, so we'll have those, we will, we will have solid action items. If, if there is a item of information that you're concerned about and you want to move forward, you can let us know at lunch. It's, it's, I can't make any promises because of OD's staff schedule. But if Jerry, for example, you feel strongly about that, or Jessica, you think that the item needs a bigger group, we'll.
So the only one, if you're, if you're thinking about an information item, the only, only one we could probably move is the education budget process. The other one, we have people that are, they're expecting phone calls at a specific.
I was thinking about that one, because I know Jerry had.
I think that's an important one.
Raised some issues around that one.
I thought I could at least be at the very start of it.
We can certainly move it to 1:00 PM.
What time is it scheduled for now?
4:05. We could move it to 1:00 PM if you like.
Okay, will that work for staff?
That should be fine for staff.
I'm fine with that. It's an, it's an item for information, right? It's not a, it's not a first read. Okay. All right, so we're, thank you for that. We are adjourned for our work session, and we'll come back for the regular meeting at 1:00.
Lunch is on the fourth floor.